Palermo just stepped out. Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton is absent. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for a pledge and remarks by Senator Harding.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, my nation and my government, indivisible, with every due justice.
Please, please have a seat. Actually, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. We had some nice recognition events and celebrations last week for Veterans Day. That kind of continued last night with an event that I co-chaired. It's called Helping a Hero. And the Bass Pros are involved with the program too. They put up 25% of the funds to go to raise, to build 100 homes for veterans. And so last night's event was for a veteran that's Ben Marks Meyer and his family, who were going to build a house for in Sarpy County and give him an opportunity to get back on his feet. And he's a woodworker and build a nice shop for him so that he can be productive and show his kids what it means to put a good day's work in and build that good, that work ethic. So it reminded me too that we do, we do celebrate Veterans Day, November 11th every year, but I think we should thank our veterans more than one, one day a year. So if you have a mind of, you know, tomorrow, six months from now, when you run into a veteran, please thank them for their service and the sacrifices that their families make for all of us. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate you, having you here today and we look forward to hearing from you on our many items. I encourage you to turn your cellphones off or at least turn them to vibrate.
Item six, a resolution to approve the final plat for MH Landing Replat Two located northeast of 70th and Grover Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Randy Kuchak with Lampard Neareston, 147, 14710 West Dodge Road, Omaha, Nebraska. Here on behalf of the applicant CK Acquisitions, Inc., here to answer your questions that you may have today.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items seven through nine can be considered together for Lake Cunningham Village located southeast of 96th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven in ordinance to rezone this property from near district to R5 district. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item nine, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items seven, eight, and nine are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer. This is the second phase of Lake Cunningham Ridge. It consists of about 84 lots and six outlots. It's at the southeast corner of 96th and State Street. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items 10 through 11 can be considered together for property located at 2905 and 2507 Q Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10 in ordinance to rezone property located at 2905 Q Street from GI District to CC District. Item 11 in ordinance to amend boundaries of the MCC District to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and vote on items 10 and 11 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items 12 through 14 can be considered together for property located northwest and southwest of 168th and Shirley Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be it communications and opposition. Items 12 and 13 ordinance is to rezone this property from R3 district to R6 district and R7 district. Item 14 in ordinance to amend boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and vote on items 12, 13, and 14 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me today is Kent Rasmussen and Kip Ding-McDimmick of McNeil and Company. Pat McNeil may be here later at some point, but McNeil Company is the developer of this proposed project. So this is located at the northwest. See if I can get it. So this is north, so just to get it so you're right with the world. This is 168th Street to the east. This is Shirley Street and Shirley Street bisects the proposed development on the north and the proposed development on the south. And so the surrounding properties to the north is R3, to the east is R3, and to the west is also R3. So all the surrounding area, at least with respect to the residential neighborhoods, are is zoned R3. This current development is also zoned R3, but what we're proposing today is to zone the north part to R6 and the south part to R7. To the south, and that's kind of the critical component here, is the mixed-use center that's immediately to the south because that's what makes this particular project master plan compliant, which we'll get into in a little bit. So again, with the property north of Shirley, we're looking to zone that from R3 to R6. And then with respect to the property that's located south of Shirley, we're looking to rezone that from R3 to R7. So the total project itself consists of 194 total units. The unit mix is approximately 47% one bedrooms. That's about 92 one-bedroom units. There's about 52% are two-bedroom units. That's equals about 100 units within the development. And then there's 1% that are three-bedroom units within this development. That's only about two units. What we have then is an average rental rate. This is a market rate project. The average rentals are between 1,100 for the one-bedroom, up to 2,600 a month for the three-bedrooms. So it's going to be a very nice project at this particular location. So then we talk about kind of the separation of the two projects to the north of Shirley Street. We have 66 units and there are three buildings that consist of 22 units each. They're all three stories in height. They have pitched roofs. They're residential in feel and in character. And they have about a 38-foot height to the midpoint of the peak, which is how you measure multifamily buildings and under the code. You'll also see some composite drawings I have later kind of showing the whole site plan and kind of 3D renderings. And it drops about 10 feet from the adjacent residential development to the west, the existing homes. So it drops about 10 feet. So in actuality, you have a 38-foot measurement, but you're dropping about 10 feet. So you're really only about 28 feet as far as the actual elevation of the building. And I do have some exhibits that kind of show that. And so this would be in about this location here. And so what this is showing here are the existing single-family homes. And then you'll notice the 10-foot drop. And then, of course, you've got the three-story buildings, three of them here with 22 units each. And so then the higher density development south of Shirley is shown here in that location. So that kind of shows you the relationship between the adjacent residential neighborhood to the west and the proposed three-story buildings on the north side of Shirley. With respect to the kind of the conceptual elevations here, this is the materials. This is an MCC overlay that we're requesting also today. And what the MCC overlay district does is it kicks in the urban design code. So we have to comply with the urban design code with respect to articulation of the roof, building materials, buffer yards, et cetera. Everything that is involved in the urban design code that applies to multifamily housing has to be implemented with this particular project. So I'm just showing you kind of the look of the three-story buildings, which are on the north side of Shirley. And they have, you'll notice that they have built-in garages. So there's 26 garages on the north side of the development. There's 76 parking stalls and they have 16 tandem parking stalls. And so the tandem parking stalls are the spaces in front of the garage that someone could park a car in the garage and also right outside of the garage. So then we get to the south side of the development, south side of Shirley. This shows the composite elevations and drawings of the two buildings here. There's a third building up here that I'll show you in a minute. This also shows the swimming pool and bathhouse amenity. This is not a clubhouse. It's just a bathhouse and that's all to serve, to serve the pool in this area. And if you get back to the site plan, here, the pool and the bathhouse are in this location right here. So on the south side of Shirley Street, there's 128 units with three buildings. There is one 61 plex shown here. This is a five-story building, so it's one story of underground parking and four stories up. But again, this is along 168th Street, which is a major arterial road that has just been recently improved to a five-lane section between Pacific Street and West Center Road. So then we have another 47 plex building. And again, this one is five stories with one underground parking area and four stories above. And then we have one 20 plex building shown in this location here. And that is three stories in height as well. And it's 38 feet in height, just like the three buildings that are on the north side of Shirley Street. With respect to the south side, there's 106 garages. There are 222 parking stalls. And again, we talked about the pool house and the swimming pool. At that location, there's some sidewalks that actually lead from the apartment units to the swimming pool. So there doesn't need to be anyone walking out here on the, this side of the sidewalk or the street on Shirley Street. So everything's kind of internal as far as the walking areas. There are two detention basins as well. They're shown here and also in this location. You'll notice there's a lot of green space. This, this property's been undeveloped for over 40 years. It's been platted and yet not developed primarily. And Pat McNeil's here, he'll tell you why. He bought this property probably 25 years ago. And the reason why it wasn't developed is he always knew that 168th Street was going to be improved to a five-lane section and that was going to be under construction for two to two and a half years, which it was. And it was recently completed. And so now this property here is ripe for development because you're not going to have two, two and a half years of street construction and you'll be able to access Shirley Street and then, of course, 168th Street. So that gets me to the, I guess I do have some renderings of the buildings that are south of Shirley. Again, one story, underground parking, four stories up. But again, these are the buildings that are located right along 168th Street. So this is actually a good transitional use between the commercial development to the south as well as the busy major arterial of 168th Street. So you've got this transitional use between 168th Street on the east, the commercial mixed-use area to the south, and then, of course, this development, which is the multifamily. And then you have the single-family residential neighborhood to the west. So this is a good transitional use under our master plan and our zoning code. So this is another conceptual elevation. Again, these are the two buildings that are along 168th Street. Here, here's another drawing showing the elevations as well. But, but that gets us to the master plan and why this is master plan compliant. And this is page 30 out of the land use element of the master plan. And what that says is that, and this is just generic, okay? This is just a master plan, but if you apply it to what we have, and I've got the future land use map here, this is exactly what we have in this particular location. So what you have at 168th and West Center Road is 165-acre mixed-use center. And then what you have at 168th and Pacific Street is a 60-acre mixed-use center. So what our master plan says is that you can have up to 500 units adjacent to a 165-acre mixed-use center. So in this particular case, we can have 500 units, right? There's 200 within the area that have been accounted for. So we could have 300 additional units in this location, but we only have 194 units. So we're much less than the master plan actually would allow for if we meet, if we would meet all the site regulators. So this is the future land use map. And so if you can see here, this is West Center Road. Here's Shirley Street. Here's 168th and Pacific Street showing the 60-acre mixed-use center. So this area right here, the mixed-use area from 168th and West Center Road goes to the half-mile. And then this is the kind of limits of our development. That is exactly what is right here in the master plan. So we're 100% compliant with the master plan as far as the number of units that you can have at this particular area. So that gets me to the zoning code itself. Now that we're master plan compliant, we also meet all the site regulators of R6 and R7 zoning. So all the buffer yards and previous coverage, everything is met in the zoning code. And we did have a neighborhood meeting on August 1st. I think there was probably 45 to 50 people in attendance at that particular meeting and our whole team was there to address the concerns of the neighbors and also answer whatever questions. I've had communication with their attorney, Mike Matukowitz, a few times and he sent me some emails and we've gone back and forth. We also had a very lengthy discussion at Planning Board. I think we were, I think I was at this podium for about two hours at the Planning Board. This comes to you with favorable recommendations from the Planning Department, from Public Works. It also comes with a unanimous recommendation of approval from the Planning Board as well. Why? Because it's completely master plan compliant. We meet all the site regulators under the code and this just makes sense for this particular area and in this location. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and address any opposition that we might have here today. But, but that's the bottom line is compliant with the master plan, compliant with the code, and it's a proper and appropriate development for this particular location.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none any opponents? And maybe just show hands for me so I know how many folks intend to speak in opposition. Okay. Thank you.
My name is Michael Matukowitz from Lykus and Matukowitz LLC Law Firm, 8701 West Dodge Road here in Omaha. I represent the Rose Garden Estates Homeowners Association on this matter. And the Rose Garden Estates homeowners consist of 261 single-family residents, which are located between west of 168th Street, between Shirley Street and Pacific Street. Previously, prior to the meeting last week, I provided to each of you and to the city clerk, a petition signed by 261 residents in the area. I provided my letter in opposition on behalf of the residents, as well as this presentation today, and a opinion letter by an architect, Doug Gibson, who's a city planner and a Nebraska licensed architect. Have those been made part of the public record or do I need to request that now?
They have been.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, the proposed ordinances, although we've heard otherwise, do not comply with the master plan. They do not carry out the goals and objectives of the master plan. We've all seen the plan, where it's located. And as I mentioned, they do not carry out the goals and objectives of the master plan. More importantly, they don't satisfy the legal requirements set forth in the actual zoning statute in Nebraska, which is set forth at Nebraska Revised Statutes 14-403. And I'll go through those considerations, as well as the seminal case on zoning from the Nebraska Supreme Court, Davis versus City of Omaha, which is a 1950 case, which is still good law, that goes into the consideration city planners and the city council should take into consideration when considering a zoning change like the one before you today. The, in addition, the plan here by McNeil and the ordinance change would adversely affect the neighborhood. It would exacerbate existing traffic congestion. It would endanger public safety. It would also result in an undue concentration of people and cars, straining existing infrastructure and reducing the value of neighboring homes. And those are the considerations set forth in statute and set forth in Davis. Now the, as for Mr. Jovan's perspective and from a developer's perspective and sometimes city planning's perspective, they take an objective look at the master plan. Can we make this fit? And Mr. Jovan just laid out why, from an engineering or mathematical standpoint, he could, he could ask you if he could put 500 units on this. That doesn't mean it's the right thing for the, for a city planning and it's not the right thing per the master plan, which contains numerous subjective elements for your consideration, which are never considered, are not discussed by city planning, and often not discussed here. So I think what we should be looking at, according to Davis and the statutes, are is this the best use of the, of this property? Does it provide the best quality of life for our neighbors here in Omaha, our families, and the community? The more subjective considerations. And that's what the master plan addresses in addition to the engineering and mathematical considerations. So this zoning change, as I mentioned, does not carry out the concept elements and goals of the master plan. In the master plan, there's a provision called the future, or excuse me, let me strike that. The future land use map that Mr. Jovan showed you actually shows this as low-density residential. I'll show you. Here, here's the plan. I've having read here where the property is located. Residents and people of the city of Omaha have a reason to believe the master plan is, is accurate. And here it shows this is going to be long-term residential use. Back to our considerations, the homeowner should be able to rely on the master plan and the, and the map. And according to the legal justifications that I'm going to review with you here, there's simply no justification for this plan. Now, in the city of Omaha master plan, we've heard again about the mathematical elements. Well, there's also a concept element called vision. And it's on page eight of the master plan. And it says, "Omahans need to take pride in the physical attractiveness of their city and work to eliminate visual blight and to promote high-quality design. Omaha's urban form must be carefully designed to eliminate land use conflicts, reduce traffic congestion, encourage pedestrian movement, and incorporate open space." Now, Mr. Jovan just reviewed you, with you, the concept elements and it seemed to be a very use, a very dense use of this particular property. Certainly would not reduce traffic with 194 new units in this already congested area. There's another concept element in the Infrastructure and Public Service and Transportation section of the master plan on page 42. And that provides that the city should avoid changes in land that would generate traffic in excess of the design capacity of surrounding streets. Here I'd note, and Mr. Jovan noted, that they recently reopened and widened 168th Street. According to Public Works, two traffic studies have been ordered on this area, which have never been carried out. So we don't know what effect, if any, that the reopening, which just reopened early this fall, I believe it was September that 168th Street opened. We have no idea what that impact has been and how much it relieved a very congested area. Also from the master plan, under the Urban Development section, under Goals and Concepts, page six, it provides, "The city of Omaha will ensure that all areas of the city are served by adequate, well-maintained infrastructure and public services. Services and facilities will serve both existing and anticipated development in an efficient, equitable, and cost-effective manner." To our knowledge, there's been no study of the impact of 194 new units in this area of Omaha. Next, ladies and gentlemen, the zoning change, change does not satisfy the required legal considerations that I mentioned a moment ago. And this comes directly from the statute about zoning and from the Davis case that I mentioned. Now, zoning changes must comply with the master plan and zoning regulations are designed to, A, lessen congestion of the street, in the streets. This certainly won't do that with 194 new units. Should be secure from, safety from fire, panic, and other dangers. Should promote health and the general welfare. Should provide adequate air and light. Should prevent the overcrowding of land. Here, 194 units on under nine acres, I think it's 8.9 acres, is certainly not preventing overcrowding of land. It should secure safety from flood. It should avoid undue concentration of population. Should facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewer, schools, parks, and other public requirements. Promote convenience of access. And those are all, again, from statute 14-403 in Davis versus City of Omaha. Now, in the planning application itself in the city of Omaha, it says that these are the considerations we look at. We're looking for an appropriate use of land, which will not adversely affect the neighborhood by causing congestion, endanger public safety, cause undue concentration of people, impede the use of transportation, water, sewer, schools, parks, and other facilities, and reduce the volume of buildings. Now, those are the considerations that the planning commission is designed to look at. Here we have 194 apartment units, including 102 with two or more bedrooms, 342 parking stalls, and a large swimming pool on 8.8 acres. It's not an appropriate use of this land. It would strain existing physical infrastructure and public services. It adds undue concentration of people. It creates visual blight, as you saw from the, from the drawings. It increases traffic along an already congested 168th Street corridor. And it does not encourage pedestrian movement. Now, Mr. Jovan mentioned there's a walking trail on the, I believe it was the south side to the pool. That doesn't address how people on the north side of Shirley Street are going to cross to get over to this swimming pool. I didn't see much of any encouragement of pedestrian movement throughout this. In fact, takes away open space by developing so densely this 8.8 acres. My last consideration is there's really the primary access to 168th and Shirley Streets, to this area, which already has 261 single-family homes, is along 168th Street onto Shirley. It's already crowded. It's heavily congested and there's no traffic control device in this area. Now, this, also the rendering of the drawing invites additional parking along Shirley Street because there's not adequate parking for the swimming pool. And frankly, I don't think we can rely upon all the residents from both sides of this to walk to the swimming pool. I think they're going to be parking along Shirley Street. Now, the schools in this area are already at or overcapacity. Now, the schools that serve this neighborhood are Elkhorn Ridge Middle School, which has 500-plus students, and the Spring Ridge Elementary School, which has 552 students, which is overcapacity. And this is taken from the Spring Ridge Elementary website. This school year, they basically said, "If you're moving into this area and you're going to try to go to this school from certain neighborhoods, please look to Elkhorn. You need to go elsewhere. We're at capacity." That's directly from the Spring Ridge Elementary website. So again, the schools are already at capacity. Now, there are already six apartment complexes within about a two-mile radius of this area, totaling 1,110 units, excuse me. So do we really need 194 new, new units when we have 1,110 and six apartment complexes within a two-mile radius? Now, here, Mr. Jovan mentioned that there's been some dialogue, but the dialogue has been very limited. It's pretty much been, "This is the plan we're going to do, and that's the way it's going to be." I'll note that the yellow here is our development that we're talking about here today, where we're talking about the zoning change. In blue, up in the top corner, that is where Live 178 was approved by the city council about a year ago, adding about 100 new units at 178th and Pacific. So again, those units aren't done. Those are going to add to those schools, which are already overcrowded. Those two are this close together. They attend the same schools. We believe that this will have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. Again, with 194 units on 8.8 acres, it's really at maximum capacity. Generally, city planners look at 21.2 units per acre as a rule of thumb. We exceed that greatly with this proposed development. As I mentioned, the pool planned along Shirley Street invites parking along Shirley Street. And there's really been no investigation or studies regarding how much increase in traffic, stormwater management, stormwater runoff, runoff treatment, or effect on existing sanitary sewer in this area. Now, these intersections that serve this area are among the 50 busiest intersections in Douglas County. And that's according to the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency. It shows number 12th busiest in Omaha, 168th and West Center Road. And that was 2016. In 2018, it was still number 12, 168th and West Center Road. It's one of the busiest intersections in this city, and we're adding 194 units. Omaha's a special place, ladies and gentlemen of the council. People come here when they visit. They come to the College World Series. They come to other events, the volleyball championships, the swimming championships. And you hear people, when you speak with them, and I'm sure I'm not alone in this, that you've heard people say, "What a great community we have here." It's a city that's accessible. It's a city that we can travel from one end to the other relatively unimpeded right now. And if we continue to develop like we did Live 178, and now this consideration before you, we're going to look a lot like Denver. I was recently in Denver, and I went from Highlands Ranch to Westminster, which should take about 20 minutes. It took me an hour and a half at 2:00 on a Wednesday afternoon. Is that what we want for the city of Omaha? Another picture of Denver, this is more something like 168th Street. That's what 168th Street will look like with 194 new units in this area. I thank you for your attention today, and I request on behalf of Rose Garden Estates that you deny ordinance number 43171, 43172, and 43173. And I'm available for questions.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll have a number of other testifiers in opposition. We'll see if we can keep those remarks non-repetitive in maybe two or three minutes, so we can hit everybody, and then we'll come back with questions from the council. Other opponents today?
Good afternoon. I'm David French. I live at 1717 South 170th Street. I'm also here on behalf of three elderly neighbors, Phyllis Norskov at 17007 Shirley Street, Beth Mueller, 1723 South 170th Street, and Gary Spencer, 17031 Shirley Street, all of whom are within 300 feet of the proposed development. As Attorney Mike said, the applicant wants to put urban density inside a suburban area. The land is surrounded on three sides by, you know, R3 use. There's a buffer directly to the south. And the reason why we're here today, why the developer and why the city planning department are advocating for this is because of some fluke in the city master plan, where if a property is approximately 30 inches into the 500-foot zone, as demonstrated by Attorney Jobin, every piece of land associated with that land is therefore grandfathered in, even if it's like a fluke in the city zoning rule. I'd echo what Attorney Mike said, that there are subjective considerations we ask that all of you consider. What's highly unlikely here is we have, as opposed to most developments, apartments are zoned first, and then single-family homes are zoned second, or they're zoned together at the same time, so the uses conform. Here we have an entirely R3 use development on three sides. The land was picked as a suburban setting neighborhood with a certain density, R3 in particular, and here we have the developer trying to abruptly unsettle that whole look and feel for the entire neighborhood. The proposal offers that the developer would, the site plan does, would build a building that is the tallest building for a mile and a half, except for the Aloft Hotel and the hospital and the helipad next door. So the height of the buildings is extremely aggressive and offensive for the neighboring and adjacent parcels, in addition to the density. The land is designated on Army Corps Engineers wetland maps. The developer has applied for a permit, and it's been issued a certain permit from the Army Corps Engineers. In recent talks with the Army Corps Engineers, the developer admitted they might need to modify their permit because of land as shown on the screen, which would, if improved and if redug, and if retaining walls were put in on this north parcel, so I see E3 on the drawing, if this land were improved as proposed by current site plans drafted by the Architect of Record, by the developer, they would need to get a brand-new Army Corps Engineers permit that differs from the one that currently exists. My concern is if the city council says yes to this development, it's setting back precedent. It's saying yes to developing land that conforms with all the adjacent parcels as R3, as with zoning approval having up to eight times the density. The zoning approval would approve, not the site plan per se, but zoning, and would allow the developer to put in as many as 300 units in this very small piece of land. It would be a very tall building, like I described, and it would place three, four, and five-story buildings adjacent to ranch homes, which I find aesthetically offensive. The authorization of, in the site plan, if authorized by the city, if there were a pool on the right of the way, on Shirley Street, I find it to be like an offensive location for a private immensity that is only to be used by private citizens of that apartment complex. There's already been in-site plans, drawings linking sidewalks, public way sidewalks, to the pool, even though it's a private immensity. It deserves to be tucked away, if not removed, from the site plan. I want to remind, the burden of proof is on the developer here. So this parcel has been zoned, has been up for zoning consideration twice. In 1977, it was changed from farmland to R3, and then, I believe in '92, a developer not here, not affiliated with today, applied to the city for rezoning and was denied. So I want to call out, the burden of proof is not on the objectors here. It's on the developer, showing that they're conforming with the Davis case, with the requirements of this Nebraska statute. It doesn't show. Sorry. Is it activated? These considerations, which, again, are subjective, not considered by the city planning department at all, and in the developer's three-page application, written application, are completely unaddressed. So I've never seen a three-page application for a redevelopment of this size. If I were a developer, I'd be submitting a binder of how proud I am that I've carefully balanced all the considerations, provided subjective, thought to subjective considerations, objective considerations, and have tried to make something in the least offensive way possible. Here the developer is, here's three pages, deal with it. We'll meet with you on August 1st, but we'll cross our arms and say to you, "This is a done deal. I'm doing what I want. You know, stop talking to me." And that's pretty much the theme that's going on here with the developer and with the three-page submission. It's extremely hard for us to prime the pump and endorse a project where it's three pages and really no considerations given to the neighbors and the adjacent parcels' use. So my biggest concern is traffic. The developers offered nothing on the basis of how it's tried to consider traffic, mitigate traffic, how this development will somehow be in net zero on traffic. There's a lot of silence, and it's on all these factors. Silence, silence, silence. Like, we're not going to offer any evidence of why these considerations have been fulfilled by the developer's proposal. The last thing is, there's no market study that developers provided or commissioned. And my concern for all of you, for the city council, is if we offer on piecemeal decisions, apartment, 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 without any consideration to the mix, the number, the type of units, where they're located, that Omaha could have, in particular with this development, could build 192 units, have it be the wrong mix for the neighborhood, and then we have a blighted apartment complex that goes into bankruptcy, it goes into liquidation, it gets receivership, it goes into other owners, and we have to live nearby it for the next many decades. So we're also concerned that no forethought has been given to what the developer proposes as far as this is a proper mix for the marketplace for the next five or 10 years to absorb people looking for housing. This is the proper development, the proper use of land. It's completely lacking from the proposal. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Other opponents today?
Good afternoon, members of the city council. My name is Carol Goldie, and I live at, and my husband Jim and I live at 16823 Pine Street, Omaha, Nebraska, in Rose Garden Estates. We've lived there since 1988, over 34 years. When we purchased this home, it was footnoted in the covenants and expressed by our realtor that Lot 262, which is the northeast side, be used only for single-family residential purposes, except such lots or portions thereof, as may thereafter, be conveyed or dedicated by the owner thereof for church, educational, charitable, and recreational purposes. During these years, Jim and I have maintained the property behind our home. We are the sole maintainers of that property, and that's in the green space that Mr. Jobin referred to on the northeast side. We have, this space was nothing but weeds, wild mulberry trees and ash trees. Jim and I have seeded the grass, done weed control, fertilized, and mowed this area. In the 34 years that we have been the sole caretakers of this piece of land, we constructed a fence past our property, as we saw it was ours. Never once in the 34 years, nor the 20-plus years that Mr. McNeil has owned that green space, has anyone else besides Jim and I and the neighbors behind that green area come in this to mow, nor have they performed any tree maintenance. No one has removed dead branches that have fallen. And in fact, after the snowstorm of October 24th and 25th of 1997, multiple large limbs from a very large maple tree in that area fell, and we had to clear that area out. And we are not young, so it was a very difficult task. Those limbs are scattered everywhere. A few years later, we paid for the remainder of that maple tree to be removed, which cost us well over $1,000. A few years after removing the maple, we planted an oak and a linden in that same vicinity. Unfortunately, the linden was struck by lightning last year, and we paid to have it removed as well. We have also paid for the removal of a dying ash tree that was diseased. After, about 15 years ago, we planted a very large vegetable garden, which is fenced in. We have invested a lot of time, energy, and money to maintain and improve this parcel of land, and we believe it belongs to us. Now, the developer wants to build an apartment complex in the backyard, so when we look out our windows, instead of seeing natural wooded area or green space, we will be blessed with the view of three-story tall building, a concrete parking lot, and a commercial dumpster filled with trash waiting to be picked up. The large, emptying the dumpster will create significant acoustic pollution. It will bring stench. It will create food habitats for rats, raccoons, and other vermin, and it will deprive us and our neighbors of reasonable, peaceful use of the property. This project will destroy the quality of life for adjacent residents. We were told by the zoning board that the development will not, will not devalue our home, but that is not true. We have sent you a copy of the letter from our realtor, as many other property owners that backed to this development have done, that it will definitely, definitely negatively affect the resale value of our home in the future. Mr. McNeil stated in his zoning board meeting that he was told when he purchased this property from Mr. Jenke over 20-plus years ago, that the city council would support the development of multifamily facilities on Lot 262. If this is true, then why weren't the residents of Rose Garden Estates afforded the same privilege and informed that this property was going to be changed to a multifamily zoning, and covenants would no longer be honored? One last point I would like to make, and I believe it has already been made, but I want to reiterate it, is that throughout this process, Mr. McNeil and his representatives have not been open to meeting with anyone, no, not anyone, to discuss changes to his project or to get input from Rose Garden Estates residents. Thank you for your time. Please be judicious in making your decision, and take into consideration, consideration that this is a residential neighborhood and should be, should remain zoned R3 as such. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Tasha Newell. I live at 1803 South 169th Circle. My peers and I have all written statements about how this development will impact our lives negatively. It will affect our quality of life. Rather than stand up here today and tell you how our lives will be negatively impacted, I want to discuss how the rezoning of these two separate plots is inappropriate. The zoning ordinances of the city of Omaha are presumed to be valid in the absence of clear and satisfactory evidence to the contrary. That means that when the city of Omaha designated this area R3, deciding to regulate, restrict, or prohibit the erection, construction, or reconstruction of multifamily housing, we presume that it was right to do so. When the city of Omaha designated this area R3 to be uniform for this class or kind of building throughout the district, we presume it was right to do so. It is already considered congestion in the streets, safety from fire, the health and welfare of its residents, the light and air and crowding of land, the concentration of population here. It is already considered the provision of transportation, water, sewer, schools, parks, and other public requirements. And in its consideration of these factors, limiting this area to R3 is presumed to be correct. We have gathered all of our resources to show the city council that our neighborhood, zoned consistently and uniformly as R3, would be harmed in all of the eight ways that this council must consider. We also emphasize that petitioner has not met his burden. While he has shown beautiful mockups of this proposed development, he's entirely failed to meet his burden of overcoming the presumption that R3 is the correct zone for the neighborhood. We highlight three main areas. Road congestion. He's done zero studies on this, especially considering the already busy corridor. I requested an accident report from the city, but the accidents have yet to be catalogued for 2022. We personally have seen three accidents that have taken place at Shirley and 168th intersections since September of 2022. There's still car shrapnel in the street this morning from them. Population concentration. Our schools are already at capacity and cannot handle additional residents from a multifamily development. When they do accommodate, as city employees will do, it will affect our children's educations as the classrooms will be full and students will get less one-on-one time with teachers. And safety. It subjects our neighborhood to a surround of parking lots and many cars. Children navigating traffic now from the backyard as well as the front. All but one home surrounding the parking lot have children, and several have small children. Moreover, in an emergency situation, for instance, a fire, in which residents are trying to flee the area in their vehicles, would a fire truck be able to enter the site and have enough mobility to effectively fight the fire? As it's As it stands, Rose Garden has a current ratio of roughly five dwelling units per acre. Petitioner's plan will include twenty-one point nine units per acre, which will impose four times the current zoning density into the existing subdivision. Even though we only highlight three, we emphasize that all eight factors would be impacted by this proposal. Of course, we do not dispute the fact that petitioner has a very real property interest in this land that he has owned for over twenty years. We understand that he has every right to develop this land. We argue that he must do so in accordance with the requirements of R-three zoning, which we must treat as valid unless petitioner proves it otherwise. The city of Omaha has already given great consideration to these eight factors when deciding to designate the district R-three. The designation must be given the way it is due unless petitioner has come forward on each and every one of these eight factors anew. As he clearly has not, we request that this petition be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Good afternoon. Peter Nelson. Reside at one seventy-one oh five Walnut Circle. And we heard from Mr. Jobin earlier that this property has not been previously developed because of waiting on improvements to one hundred and sixty-eighth Street. And also I want to call it an attention what Mrs. Goldie just said about and our not hearing about the the possibility of rezoning back when Mr. McNeil purchased the property. Now, another huge omission that I would like to call it a consideration here. Let's think about what happened when one hundred and sixty-eighth Street was widened. Virtually every foot of one hundred and sixty-eighth that is on this drawing was torn up, as was from about here to here of Shirley Street. At at the time that the project for one hundred and sixty-eighth was planned, would have been the perfect opportunity to have re-engineered Shirley Street, possibly widening it a bit in that block. Not to mention putting another turnoff in here for the south. And although it would would have been difficult, possibly another exit out of the north side. Now, with that having been built, going back to redo it could could mean another expensive and disruptive project. And the question that McNeil and his people need to answer here is why were they not part of the conversation at the time the one hundred and sixty-eighth widening was in the planning stages? So that their intentions were known and this area could have been engineered appropriately. So I think you need to have that answered and and if not outright deny this request, at least lay it over and until that can be satisfactorily answered. If McNeil and company have were in on the conversation, they should be compelled to provide documented evidence of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Good afternoon. Ryan Newell, one eight zero three South one hundred and sixty-ninth Circle. I work in apartment development and management. I have so for the last seventeen years. In my experience with these matters, the the most important thing for the developer manager is to work with the neighborhood. Because we know we're going to live with them in perpetuity and be neighbors with them. I'm just going to reiterate, I think, what what you've heard, I think, from the neighborhood is there's been no attempt by the developer to do such. This should be a central theme when we watch videos of people meeting with the city council, meeting with the city planning board. We see the developer coming up next to the neighborhood and trying to make considerations so they could be peaceful and live together over the long term. No, no attempt has been made. The attempt at a neighborhood meeting was simply to go through the required motions. Numerous attempts have been made by the neighborhood to reach out to developer prior to the city meeting. And to date, only one of those attempts only recently was acknowledged. But to my but to my knowledge, zero attempts have been given any real recognition. I urge the city council to take this into consideration when making the rezoning decision. I've communicated my feeling about the egregious site plan to you in writing through a series of letters. I won't rehash those out here. I assume they're part of the record. But I ask that, you know, the only way that the neighborhood is going to get any recognition is if you deny the rezoning quest or lay over until such time as it really forces him to take us seriously and spend the time and figure out how we can do it together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please. Are we are we all set? I thought we had a couple more. All right, come on down, please.
I'll make it quick. Thank you for your time. So my name is Brian Ball. I live at sixteen twenty-three South one hundred and seventieth Street. And my main concern overall is there are two streams that come together at this point. All right, and they bump the streams come together and they are right along one hundred and sixty-eighth Street. Now, this forms a natural watershed is what's going on. And the hawks love the watershed. So where will where will the hawks go? But in all seriousness, when they are going to grade this land, you're going to have water drainage that is going to be affected. Now, McNeil states they've done a water study. I submit to you it's a bad study. So I think you really need to consider this. Because it's not so much for me as a homeowner, but if you live in this apartment with these this natural watershed that now has been, you know, channeled and land moved, I mean, I think you could have flooding issues as being a tenant in these dwellings. So I think you need to consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think we have one more opponent that wants to speak, right?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Nick Cass, eighteen nineteen South one hundred and sixty-ninth Circle. As somebody who's recently purchased their first home here in Omaha at the aforementioned address, very proud to live there. Home values are forefront on my mind. From the information I can find from the Douglas County Assessor's Office mirrored by KETV, the median selling price for a single-family home in Omaha has increased from one hundred and sixty thousand in January twenty sixteen to nearly two hundred and sixty thousand the following five years later, January twenty twenty-one. This is roughly a ten percent growth per year compounded annually. I can't foresee the future, but if this trend were to continue, we could expect that a modest two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar home could gain as much as twenty-five thousand dollars in the course of a year. Anything that affects that increase in growth takes away from potential capital one's building on the site. So I think the consideration has to be not just that home values may reduce, but they may not accrue as rapidly. Due to the compounding nature of values, this effect increases the further out one goes. Even a modest one percent reduction in growth rate over a period of five years could result in a total loss of between eight thousand and eighteen thousand dollars over the following five years. Excuse me. In raising these concerns with McNeil and company developers at the first meeting in August, we were told this was something that simply didn't happen. We shouldn't be concerned about it. This issue was raised at the planning board meeting as well, and we were offered the assurance after public comment had been closed, this wasn't something they saw, we shouldn't worry about it. It was further suggested if the project were approved, we should come back in two years and our taxes certainly wouldn't go down. Even as a a proxy for home values, this seems unconvincing. I hate to ask for my property taxes to go up more rapidly, but it kind of begs the question, has serious study of this topic been undertaken? I've also submitted written correspondence to the planning board dated September second detailing the kind of unusual nature of this proposal. So I studied through the use of publicly available data, all properties within three and one-quarter miles of the proposed development to see if there were any other instances of R-six or R-seven being placed adjacent to R-three neighborhoods. I found four such examples, which I listed out in my correspondence. One is a church slash synagogue. Another one is a church. There's Stony Brook Apartments, which borders only, the best I can tell, a soccer field, part of the school district. And there's the West Hampton Park Apartment Homes. This is south near one hundred and ninety-second and Blondo. I can't find any examples of R-seven ever being placed directly connected to an R-three neighborhood. I'd also kind of posit that these other instances don't bear much resemblance to what's being proposed here. In particular, the West Hampton Park site is fifty-one point seven acres. It borders only one thousand two hundred and nine feet of the surrounding R-three neighborhood. The picture of the north side you've seen borders more than that on a site only three acres and change to the best of my memory. Further, the best I can tell from the assessor's records, West Hampton Park Apartments were built between two thousand and four and two thousand and seven. The adjacent R-three homes were built starting in twenty fifteen. So I would simply ask, what study has been done on home values, especially in light of the proposal here? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any other opponents that want to speak today?
Hi. My name is Jackie M. Key, one seven zero zero six Shirley Street. A lot has been said, but we've only lived there or owned the property for just over a year. I'm a real estate agent with Berkshire Hathaway. And had I been told when I called about the zoning of the property, I would have reconsidered the property that I did purchase. I was told it was R-three, it was not going to be rezoned. And here I sit within two blocks of this property. And it's going to be changed. Unethical for somebody to tell me had they known for decades that it was going to be changed. I live on ethics. I'm a real estate agent. I should I should they should know better. But yet, now all of these people in this neighborhood who were promised for years that nothing was going to be changed. Now it's changed. So I have the property, I love the property. But it's sad to think that I was basically lied to when I called. So unfortunately, I I plan on staying, but just getting in and out this morning, I couldn't cross one hundred and sixty-eighth without getting almost hit. There's no lights. I used to live in Leewood Southwest and still had that problem when it was only two lanes. And now it's four lanes of traffic. People speed through there nonstop. It's incredible that nobody has looked at that area. And and they think it's safe. It's not a safe area to put another three hundred cars. When you think about if you put two cars for every apartment complex or every every place that's going in there, those people are going to be going in front of my home. I will not go through one hundred and sixty-eighth. I would go through my neighborhood. And I live on Shirley Street. When that construction was being done, that traffic was incredible. I had people parking all over the street and and swerving in and out of cars. It's just not safe to have that many cars going through. But thanks for listening. That's that's all I have. I just wish somebody would have let me know ahead of time what I was getting into before I purchased my property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Although this specific item does not say Tiff Financing, it's still development. And I've been driving around Omaha for quite a few years. Been out west and up to Lincoln and back and up north and out to Fremont. So I've seen a lot of these areas. I don't get it. You say these areas are brighted or severely brighted, but I sure don't see how that can be the case at one hundred and sixty-eighth, one hundred and ninety-second. The first gentleman to speak in opposition, I guess maybe he's a lawyer. He was very good and thank you for being here. We shouldn't have to hire lawyers to represent us. The transparency that you've heard in the opposition today should have been heard before this was all started. But the way the game is, you have a quick hearing maybe back in November. And then you have one public hearing. After that, you come in and amend these things and do what you want to do. The problem is it's kind of like one of those old sayings about if it looks like a duck, speaks like a duck, walks like a duck, it's probably a duck. Well, transparency is the word here. Only there is no transparency. These things should have been brought up a long time ago so that the people that live in that area have a chance to fight it. The first week there's a public hearing, you may not even hear it because you read too fast, for one thing. You come back with the amendment that the people can't vote on the next week. And I've got some areas I'm going to pick out here because usually you cut me off, but I know the people here today got more time than I usually do.
And I'm getting close to doing that once you're talking to this case.
Now, there was an item in the news today, Mr. Feserson, in my area at fiftieth to from fiftieth down to Farnham Street.
We're talking about one hundred and sixty-eighth and Shirley.
Okay, but this is these are examples. Residents or guests roundabouts. The reasons are there against him is it's dangerous in that area. There's too much traffic already. One of your Tiff projects fell through just yesterday, didn't it?
This is not about Tiff either.
The bank used to be there up the street from forty-ninth or the Dodge Street and the underpass there, South Creek. There were a couple of nice houses that got razed.
Summarize before we have to move on.
We chased people out of that neighborhood so that something could go further west.
Please.
Yeah, I'm out of order.
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Everybody else out of order because they disagree.
They are not because they're talking to the case. Is there any other opponents that want to speak? We want to make sure that the neighbors have a chance to talk to their case here today.
Good afternoon. My name is Julie Bull. I live at one hundred sixteen twenty-three South one hundred and seventieth Street. I thank you for allowing us to bring our concerns to you today. And I just want to make sure, I know you've probably heard it all from everybody, that you understand that what Mr. McNeil and his company are proposing will negatively impact our neighborhood. I've lived in my home since nineteen ninety-five and as such, have been a caretaker of the land on the north side of Shirley Street since that time. Not as much as my neighbors. There's a lovely green space that runs between the backyards of many of those houses of the people that are here today and a beautiful wooded area between the other houses and one hundred and sixty-eighth Street. That green space is an area of community gardens, picnics, epic games of tag, hide-and-seek, Easter egg hunts, and many other family and community gatherings. In the twenty-seven years Mr. McNeil has owned that land, he has never cared for it. Never come to say, hey, thanks for mowing. Thanks for picking up trash. Thanks for cutting down trees. He does sometimes periodically mow the south portion, which is mostly grass. But for many, many years, we had to call the city constantly to get someone to mow that because it was overgrown and it was a nightmare. They'd have to come in with anyway. He has proven himself to be neither a good neighbor nor a good steward of the land that he owns. He has said in his own words that he was not interested in the property until one hundred and sixty-eighth Street was widened. That's like not being interested in your child until they're old enough to support you. I believe that Mr. McNeil has no right to any of that land north of Shirley as he has left it abandoned and in the care of others. You've heard these arguments before, but this is really a unique situation. You're not building apartments adjacent to a neighborhood. You are building them within an existing neighborhood. The green space that our children once played on will now be a concrete parking lot full of hundreds of cars and dumpsters and lights that will glare into our windows at night. The sounds of birds and squirrels that we enjoyed with our morning coffee will now be traffic and trucks backing up to empty the dumpsters. One thousand people will be crammed into a very small area, all for the sake of what? Money. Mr. McNeil has plenty of money? Or is it for progress? Is it progress when you're tearing down trees and destroying people's yards? Progress for whom? We were told in one meeting that it would be so nice to have affordable housing. We were told in one meeting that it would be so nice to have affordable housing in our school district. Mr. McNeil's team said that. This will not be affordable family housing. A one-bedroom apartment for $1,100 is not affordable, and it is doubtful that a family would live in a one-bedroom apartment. If the goal is affordable housing, so people can attend our wonderful Elkhorn Schools, how about building lower-cost single-family homes? Duplexes, ranch town homes, something that fits in with our neighborhood. Maybe partner with Habitat for Humanity. Build some homes there for some people who could really appreciate our green space and our beautiful life out there. We just don't think that having 1,000 people crammed in between our houses is acceptable. We are not a rich neighborhood, we are middle-class working people who have as many rights as anyone else in the city. The undue stress these apartments will put on our neighborhood is not acceptable to either us or as our elected officials, it should not be acceptable to you either. Mr. McNeil has millions of reasons that he wants to build 192 apartments in our backyard, they're dollars. We can offer you only hundreds of families, moms, dads, grandparents, childrens, retirees, and hard-working citizens that you represent. I've learned many lessons in life, but one of the most important ones that is, just because you can, doesn't mean you should.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, we're going to have the applicant have a chance to respond to anything new that he heard, and then we'll close public hearing and have questions from councilmen.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Yeah, I do want to address a few things. First of all, you know, the reference to Nebraska Revised Statute, Section 14-403 and the Davis case, I think this proposed project is entirely consistent with 14403 and the Davis case. And the reason why is it's master plan compliant, it's zoning code compliant, it meets all the requirements of both, clearly, and I can go back through all of that without trying to rehash it too much, but you do have your planning department here, you have your public works department here. This is entirely appropriate and proper for this particular property. The public infrastructure is all in place, it supports the 194 units, there's nothing out of place about this proposed development whatsoever. It's kind of the typical concerns that you have with multifamily housing projects with established residential neighborhoods such as this, but in the end, you have a master plan that you can rely on, and you have various departments and public works people and planning department people that look at this, and they do analyze it, and they do look for compliance with the law. And I think that this proposed development is entirely consistent with the law and the master plan. So, just so you know, I mean, this is a $40 million project, this is not an insignificant project. I mean, there's a lot of value, there's a tremendous amount of investment in this particular project. Mr. McNeil has every reason to protect that investment, to make sure that it's taken care of, it's well-maintained, it's well-managed, it's leasing, people make sure that the tenants are vetted and vetted well, and that, you know, sometimes with single-family developments, you don't know who your neighbor's going to be, right? So it could be anybody, it could be maybe a bad character, right? Well, at least when you have a single management company that's vetting all these people and making sure that they have the ability to pay the rent, and they don't have a criminal background, and all the things that you have with multifamily, you actually have a very safe environment. And so, you know, we always hear about, you know, the bad people that live in apartment complexes, I just don't think that's true. And then when you look at the monthly rental that you're looking at here, anywhere from $1,100 to $2,600 a month, I mean, this is not insignificant monthly rents that they will be charging for this particular project. Why? Because it's done very well. It's subject to the urban design code, the building materials, everything is going to be done first class. It's a Class A apartment complex with Class A amenities and a Class A look. So, that should be encouraged, and I think that's what the master plan does encourage, again, looking at, I mean, this is an exhibit right out of the land use element of the master plan. This is identical to the situation that we have here, up to 500 units adjacent to 165-acre mixed-use center. If you look at the actual... What we have, that's exactly what we have here, 165-acre mixed-use center. The mixed-use center actually goes to almost Shirley Street in this location, if you see the red, and then you have the, it's referred to as low-density, but that's really overridden by the master plan that calls for a certain amount of units that would be allowed adjacent to this size of a mixed-use center. And, you know, I think I heard high-density, this is not high-density under Omaha standards. On the north side of Shirley Street, it's about 20, I'm sorry, 19, 17.9 units per acre. On the south side, it's 24.8 units per acre. So it's total, when you combine them, it's 22 units per acre. This is medium-density in Omaha, it's not high-density at all. And, we talk about this all the time when we're down here discussing multifamily housing projects, is that multifamily housing projects are low-traffic generators. You've got Ryan Haas here that can talk about, you know, traffic counts and why traffic studies aren't necessarily allowed or required. When you have multifamily housing in this type of configuration, why? Because they don't have high AM and PM peak traffic counts, they just don't. People, just like in the residential neighborhood to the west, and to the east, and the north for that matter, people are coming and going at all different times of the day. They're not focused at the AM peak and the PM peak, therefore, the traffic congestion isn't what people think it is. Also, with respect to Shirley Street, and the two access points onto Shirley Street, this meets all the requirements of the driveway regulations of the City of Omaha, and again, Public Works is here to talk about that as well, if you have that question. But everything about this particular project is compliant with our master plan and our And it's not a fluke, I think someone referred to it as a fluke in the code, it's just not.
You want to summarize your thoughts?
Yeah, as far as some of the other comments, and, you know, we were always willing to meet, you know, most of the things that came back to us is reduce the number of units. Well, I mean, you just can't make that work from a feasibility perspective. You know, access onto 168th Street, well, we couldn't do that. First of all, there's a huge grade change, number one. Number two, I think it was a federally-funded project that they wouldn't even allow access at any other location besides Shirley Street. And, there's other streets that are signalized, like Francis right down to the south here. So, again, this is, I think, a terrific project, it will be, provide diversity of housing opportunities in this particular area. I mean, the people that live here, as they get older, they may want to move in to this apartment complex. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, we have our whole team here as well, and I think Pat McNeil just walked in as well, so if you have any particular questions of him, we're happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Public hearing's now closed.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I've received a number of emails, both with questions as well as against the project for various reasons, and some actually in favor of it as well, too. So, I'm going to try to, and I said in my responses that, you know, with the questions and issues that were raised, that I would certainly bring those up, because I think they deserve some conversation. So, I think this might not be in any particular order, but Mr. Jobin, if you could come back up, I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
And actually, so one of the issues I've heard the most about is traffic and the traffic studies. So, I think you just touched a little bit on the end there, but, in a meeting I've had with Mr. Matukowitz as well, too, I think, he had made some reference to maybe one or two traffic studies, and two traffic studies, and are you aware of those traffic studies, or what they were, or why they aren't relevant to what we're talking about here?
So, my understanding, and Public Works is here as well, my understanding is there was two traffic impact studies, and neither one of them showed that a traffic signal was warranted at 168th and Shirley Street. So, there were studies done, but it didn't show that the warrants were met to actually have a traffic signal. Also, my understanding, because of the traffic signal at Francis, just to the south, that may be too close, but I believe at Planning Board, and again, Public Works can correct me, I think at Planning Board, they said that they would continue to review this particular intersection in the future, and if it was ever warranted down the road, that a signal potentially could be put in at this location, but again, that's probably more of a question for Public Works. But, at this point in time, even with this proposed project, I do not believe a traffic signal would be warranted.
Okay, and then Ryan, if I could have you come up. No, I'm sorry, not you, Ryan, Newell, sorry, you have too many Ryans. I meant Ryan Haas, please, thanks. Ryan, if you could just pick up a little bit on the conversation, as to the traffic studies that were done, and why or why not we might need one here?
Yeah, Ryan Haas of the Public Works Department. So, anytime we have a project, there are only certain city processes through which city staff can recommend requirement for a traffic study. So what's before you today is a rezoning, but there's no use permit and no subdivision. Those are the two processes that you'll routinely see a project come to you with the recommendation that the applicant provide a traffic study in any identified public improvements. So because it's a straight rezoning, we don't have that, we didn't have that ability in this case. Now, we did, we, the City of Omaha Public Works, performed a corridor study for the 168th Street widening project. So that was done in the planning stages of that project to identify what kinds of things we needed to construct with our widening project. And, the original study showed that traffic signals were not warranted at Shirley. As part of the neighborhood meetings, there's concerns raised with some of the median improvements north of Shirley to the other intersections, that some of those trips are going to be rerouted, and so it was studied a second time by the city, assuming some of those trips being rerouted through the neighborhood to be kind of consolidated at Shirley. And again, the outcome of that study was that traffic signals were not warranted at that time. So that being said, we now have 168th Street opening up, we have this project, so we've recognized that the traffic patterns are going to shift more, we're going to see some, maybe some things that we didn't count last time, reflected by the fact that there's more lanes and now development. So we are planning this fall, I don't know if it's taking place yet, or will in the near future, we're going to be counting the intersection again and studying it again, and then we can do that again after the apartments open, and any improvements that would be identified at that time, then we could assess how those would take place, if any are identified.
So if the warrants, if it's shown the warrants are met, that it's possible that there could be signalization at some point?
It's possible.
If the warrants are met?
If they're met, yeah.
Okay.
We can't construct them if they don't meet warrants.
Okay. As long as you're here, let me ask you a couple other questions, because I know Julie Bowle, and some others, and in a meeting I had with Mr. Matukowitz and two of the neighbors asked about, I believe Mr. Nelson may have brought this up, too, the access, if, I don't know if you have a site plan there, but the access onto 168th Street on the south side of Shirley, between the two buildings, I think it's L5 and D4.
Direct driveway access to 168th?
Yeah, you might need to pull that up a little to show the whole plan, or, okay, you can show it there. So, on the south side, in between the two buildings, basically, I think there was some discussion from a couple of the neighbors, and as a reference in a conversation I had with Mr. Matukowitz and some other neighbors, about maybe the ability to have an access point onto 168th and there. Can you tell us why or why not that might be allowed?
Yeah, so 168th Street is classified as an arterial street, and those streets, their main job is to move traffic around, provide for those regional trips. And, the best, most efficient, and most of all, safe way to do that is to restrict the number of direct accesses, whether it's street access or driveway access. And for that reason, we don't allow new driveways onto arterial streets anymore in this part of the city. They do exist in some of the stuff that was approved previously, and those are grandfathered, but anymore we move away from direct driveway access onto those major streets, we consolidate those accesses onto the internal local streets, that's where they're most appropriate, where the speeds and volumes are the lowest, that's the safest place for those turning movements to take place. And then you have a few consolidated street connections to those arterial streets at a few select points along any given corridor. So it's the safest and most efficient way is to prohibit those direct driveways.
And as long as you're here, I think another traffic question I had is related to, actually, on Shirley Street, and there's been some concern expressed about having on-street parking on Shirley Street. And, and someone brought up the point about the possibility of those that maybe live on the north would actually drive over to the south and/or park on Shirley Street, maybe to access the pool. So, I think there's a petition process that if, as I understand it, that if the residents fronting those, fronting Shirley Street wanted to have no parking on one side or the other, that could be accomplished through the petition process. And, if that were, you know, if that were desired, it could go from 168th to, along Shirley Street to 169th Circle, or maybe even up to 170th Street. If you could, maybe just point those two intersections out, that's 169th Circle, and then 170th Street. But, so those fronting property owners would be able, is it, they need 50% or 51%?
It's 75%.
75%.
Yeah, the endpoints are the streets on either end, and then if you get 75% on a frontage basis by petition?
Okay.
Then we will go out and sign it.
So if there is a concern, and I don't know if, I don't think, if this is approved or not, that that can't be made a condition of approval, it just would have to go through that petition process?
It would have to go through the petition process, yeah.
All right. So, I would, I want that out there in the atmosphere for people to consider as well, too. I think that's all I had on traffic. I had a couple, I guess, environmental, or there've been a number of issues, questions raised about the drainage, the existing drainage way, and how that would be dealt with, as well as stormwater retention during construction and after construction. So I don't know, I don't see Bob Stube, I don't, Ryan, do you know, can you do that, or is there someone else from Public Works here that can address that?
Ryan Haas with Public Works. The city has stormwater ordinances, so any given site, an engineering study will have to be done to measure the stormwater runoff rate, present day, without any improvements. And then they'll measure, they'll calculate the amount of runoff and how quickly it runs off after all of the improvements are built, and they'll have to construct engineered measures to slow the stormwater to match the current rate. So we require that they cannot increase the stormwater, the rate of stormwater runoff, and that's a condition of any site, so certainly with this one, as part of the building permit process, that'd be reviewed and approved by the city.
Okay, and then, were there some permits that are required through, is it the NRD, or no? Could I have, Larry, if you could come up, maybe? And actually, address, because where that, and you can see it on the site plan, it's kind of that area on the south side in brown, and then going to the north.
The drainage way.
How is that, because as you drive by the site, it's very obvious, you know, where that exists, so how is that going to be part, incorporated in part of the plan, or how's that addressed?
Well, we won't be able to touch those drainage ways there, but there is a 404 permit that is in place with the Corps, US Army Corps of Engineers, so, and there's no amendment requirement or anything from what I understand, and that permit is in place for this project to go forward, and everything that you see in green regarding the drainage ways throughout the site will be required to be maintained. And so, again, everything you see here will be maintained, it will be required to be maintained, it's a natural drainage way, but it is subject to the 404 permit, which is in place right now with the Corps, that allows for this particular project.
Okay, and again, no, whatever the runoff is today cannot be increased, either during construction or post-construction as well?
Right, there's no net... Right, there's no net increase in the post-construction stormwater runoff.
Let me ask you two.
Between pre-conditions and, and post-conditions.
Let me ask you two, because it relates a little bit to what I was asking Mr. Haas about parking along Shirley Street. Because there's, there's been some questions raised in a conversation I had with, with Ryan Newell about the coming off, or the location of the pool. And maybe it's invitation to the rest of the neighborhood for, for use. How, how is that secured? And then, actually, I'll throw this part out too while you're contemplating that response. Is that, it looks like there's a sidewalk that goes from Shirley Street to the pool. And I would agree with, with Mr. Newell that that might be an invitation for others in the neighborhood to kind of come into that, is that?
I don't know that we have a problem removing that sidewalk on, on that side at all. I mean, it was really intended to serve the multifamily units here. So, if, if that's something that, that you would recommend removal, that would be fine. We're also, in that, in, we don't have any objection to no parking signs along Shirley as well. So, I don't think anyone wants people parking along Shirley Street, along the main kind of collector's street out onto 168th Street. So, if that sidewalk is removed and there's no parking signs, from our perspective, we have no problem with that.
But could you address the security on the pool?
The security on the pool, it will obviously be fenced, there'll be fobs that will only be given to tenants. So, access will only be for the tenants of the multifamily units. And so, it's not open to the public, for example. But it will be secure. And, I mean, anything, anyone that's in there that doesn't have a fob is obviously trespassing and shouldn't be there. And, you know, measures would be taken to make sure that the pool is secure at all times.
Okay. I, I think, actually, I'm going to have Ryan come back up, because I had some fire and safety questions that a number of the neighbors have, have raised as well, as it relates to, to fire response or, or access to any of the buildings or the site. Can you address that?
Ryan Haas with Public Works, the fire department reviews every site plan as part of the permitting process. And they have to meet requirements per fire code as far as site access and the ability to turn around and, and things like that. That's something that is reviewed by fire.
All right, sorry, I probably should have asked you that when you were up earlier.
That's fine.
And then, thanks. And I'll, to, behind me, I'll ask Mr. Fenslow a couple of questions as it relates to, there are some issues brought up about attendance at schools or, and could you, have, have the schools been notified of this development or this proposed development?
Dave Fenslow, City Planning, yes. Like with any other rezoning case and multiple cases that come to the department and then on the Planning Board and City Council, there's a, there's a group that is referred to as the Development Review Committee. Makes schools, school districts, public utilities, other city departments. That are notified when we receive development proposals. This case was sent on to the Elkhorn Public School District. And we received no response or concern from them about this project.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Larry, I'll have you come back up, please.
Yes.
So, this is not a PUD or planned unit development, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and what's being proposed is not requesting any waivers?
There are no waiver requests with this particular development. Also, I would point out that one of the things that's before year one, the items on the agenda is the major commercial corridor overlay district, which actually kicks in the urban design code. So, that enhances all the architectural requirements anyway. So, it's not, while it's not a PUD, it does make sure that the project is built in accordance with the urban design code with respect to four-sided architecture, articulation with the buildings and roof lines and certain interior landscape requirements on the parking areas, the buffer yards being 30 feet all the way around it. I mean, so that actually enhances the development over just a straight R6 and R7 zoning.
So, it, so if it's not a PUD, what would, what would, what would keep this from being developed otherwise with this approval?
It would, it would have to be compliant with all the site regulators, there would be no waivers. Obviously, it would have to, you know, meet the density requirements of the R6 on the north side and the R7 on the south side. But based upon the acreage on the north and the south, and with drainage ways and green space areas in here, there's really no ability to build more than the 194 units that are being proposed.
Okay, is there, is there another McNeil project that's maybe similar to this that, that we may have recognized?
Yeah, 125th and Dodge, right, just to the west of Costco, correct.
Okay, all right.
And that's where our neighborhood meeting was held, actually.
Okay. I think I'll have Mr. Matukowitz come up too, if I could, please. And then, hi, Mike. Just prior to the meeting, I think there was, I'm looking for it somewhere here, a list of, of, it's like it was an email from this morning that you had with Mr. Jobin about maybe some of the, the requests that, that some of the neighbors were still asking for?
It was from last Friday.
Oh, it was Friday, I'm sorry, yeah.
Mike Matukowitz appearing again on behalf of Rose Garden Estates. Yes, a list that the homeowners within Rose Garden Estates compiled a list of items that they would like some dialogue with the developer on and addressed both the south and the north lots. And that was sent to, to Mr. Jobin on last Friday.
Okay. And then Mr. Jobin had a chance to kind of rebut some of the testimony. I wanted to give you the opportunity to, you know, for any kind of closing statement, if you will.
Sure, sure, I guess I'll summarize what was provided to Mr. Jobin. Basically, the list, the residents had a long list of requests, Lisa, to see what would be considered and what was included with respect to the south lot, one of which has been addressed here, some of which have been addressed, were curb cuts exclusively on 168th, and I think Mr. Haas has addressed that. The second request was building A6 on the south lot to remove one story, which would be located in the building closest to the residents to lower that, the side of vision, line of vision that Mr. Jobin showed, if you saw that, the higher building is exactly what these neighbors are going to be looking at, which the buildings are quite close together, the apartment building and the closest lot there where homes are located. And the thought being if they would lower one story closest to the inside of the development towards the neighborhood, he could certainly add a, another level or layer onto the one facing 168th Street. So, that was that request. Last was to move the pool, the request is actually remove the pool or at least relocate the pool away from the straight site of the neighbors. Basically, the pool is going to be looking right into one of the neighbors' backyards. So, that was one, another request to maybe rotate the buildings and relocate the pool. With respect to the north lot, the request was to remove building E1 and rotate the parking lot in place of E1. Fence in the project, there's a lot of concern that there's no fence proposed. And again, this has been open space for quite a long time. If some of the apartment dwellers are walking back there, I guess there's some concern about with the residents' pets and those kind of things that have long roamed in that area, feeling threatened is certainly a concern. And the last request was consider selling the green space to the homeowners was another of the requests. For quick, I'll be brief on, on a closing statement. Again, we keep hearing that this development is fully compliant with the master plan. And again, it simply disregards, it's not true, it simply disregards that there are numerous subjective elements throughout the master plan that's simply are not considered and are not addressed. Review them again really quick. The first is to lessen congestion in the streets. So, how 194 apartment units on an 8.8 acre tract lessens the congestion in the streets, it just hasn't been addressed. It simply doesn't. Secure safety from fire, panic and other dangers. Again, you're adding density to an open area. Promote health and general welfare, we've heard from our residents. They certainly don't feel that their general welfare is being looked after with respect to this development and the zoning change. Provide adequate light and air. I don't think that intends having additional lights in a parking lot that are shining in our backyards and through our windows. So, again, that, that is not being served. Prevent the overcrowding of land, I mean, you saw Mr. Jobin's renderings. It's a dense development in what is now open space. And certainly, right now, it's zoned R3, could have single-family homes, but instead, we're having 194 units. Secure safety from flood, that'll obviously be addressed by the, the final stages through the zoning requirements. That'll have to be considered. Avoid undue concentration of population, again, 194 units on 8.8 acres when we have 261 single-family homes in the area. The next is facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks and others. Frankly, I know the schools have been notified about the development and didn't respond. I certainly think they, I've never actually heard of a school objecting to a development. They understand that they're funded by the taxpayers. And I guess it's telling when I've showed you from Spring Ridge Elementary, the website showing, if you move into this area and you're in one of these neighborhoods, you won't be going to these schools within this neighborhood. You're going elsewhere in Elkhorn. Promote convenience of access. Again, we're, we're adding a lot of new cars to an already crowded area in the number 12 congested intersection in Omaha. Mr. Haas mentioned that they're, they want to do a traffic study again after the fact of the reopening. There's simply not good evidence that, that that has been done and that has been considered. And we don't know what the impact will be on 194 new units on this area. So, again, the Rose Garden homeowners respectfully request that we deny the three proposed ordinances.
All right.
Thank you for your consideration.
And Larry, I'll let you have the same opportunity. But while you're coming up, I wanted just a couple of other things that were mentioned too. I think that, you know, I've heard from a number of people about just the location of the dumpster. There was a comment made this afternoon too about the covenants not being followed. Let me go in reverse order then. I'll, I'll just say that covenants are not something that the city enforces. That, that is something separate from what's, what's our jurisdiction. So, if there are any covenants that have been violated or being violated for Rose Garden Estates Homers Association, that's, that's not a city issue per se. But, two things, one is, you know, the conversation too about the location of the dumpster. I know this is kind of getting in the weeds a little bit, but I mean, it sounds, those things can be certainly worked on. And, you know, depending on what happens here today, I assume that all parties are still open to conversations about, about tweaks or further conversations to be had about the development?
Absolutely, the, the location of the trash dumpster, dumpster, we can discuss. The sidewalk off Shirley to the pool area, we can talk about that and remove that if that's necessary. About the covenants, the covenants are only recorded against the single-family lots. The covenants are not recorded against these two properties here. So, when they talked about, there's this requirement that all of the lots be used as single-family residential houses or for recreational use or whatever else is required under those covenants. Those covenants are not required, are not recorded against these two properties that are subject to the proposed development. So, they have no application here whatsoever. So, lastly, you know, under Mr. Matukowitz's analysis, no development would ever occur because every development increases population, increases traffic, increases, I mean, they, every development has impacts. What we always try to do is minimize those impacts, and I think that's what we've done here. The density has been looked at, this is a medium-density project, 22 units per acre adjacent to a 165 acre mixed-use center, which allows up to 500 units. With 200 already be accounted, being accounted for, there's 300 available, we're only at 194. So, we didn't blow this site out of the water with respect to density whatsoever. It could have been much more dense, but we didn't do that. You have a lot of green space on this particular site. As far as being able to buy, you know, the, the property back here, this green space, I believe that all goes to our impervious coverage requirements as far as the zoning code. And that's how we are zoning code compliant and not seeking any waivers, is because we do have enough green space on the site. So, that would impact that. As far as, you know, the impact on the public infrastructure, you know, streets, sewers, water, I think you've heard today that everything that's in place here today supports the proposed development, supports the proposed density. And, you know, both with respect to the street system, with respect to water, you know, power, gas, all that infrastructure is in place to support this particular project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President, I appreciate my colleagues giving me the extra time.
Thank you. There are no further lights at the moment, is there a motion? Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you, I wanted to just take a minute to let the residents know. I've received all of the emails as well. And I appreciate the fact that you were all very respectful and very clear and it was easy to understand your concerns. I know that we're going to be making a decision today that's not going to make a lot of people happy, or maybe it will make a lot of people happy, I don't know how that will go. But I do know that we're at a point in this, in Omaha where density is going to be, continue to be an issue. We're going to increase densities because we want to continue to grow, and I think that's going to be the case. And I appreciate the, the presentation by Mr. Jobin and, and the others that came and spoke. Having said that, I'm going, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve, items 12 through 14.
Second. So, motion and a second? No further lights? Rowe call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to one.
Thank you for your testimony.
Item 15, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow small group living within 600 feet of another group living facility located at 3013 and 3015 North and 95th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval, B is communications in opposition, C is communication from the applicant.
Thank you, this item was postponed from the November 1st meeting. The public hearing and vote has continued today. I'll let folks know that we had, we did have a neighborhood meeting on this. And we will have both the applicant and some neighbors here today that may want to speak. And I have an amendment that I'll walk through today with my council, fellow council members that I know they have also seen. So, we'll start by taking proponents, Mr. Breman.
Justice Breman, Nebraska Neurobehavioral Services. Here to answer any opponent's questions.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't get your address too, for the record.
4932 Evans Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, opponents.
I'm Mike O'Brien, 9485 Worth Street. Just a few comments about this whole process. I'm really kind of troubled that the city was unaware that this property was a group home for nearly 20 years. Somehow, there's a disconnect here going on. Somebody was managing or looked overseeing this, this facility because the first residents were autistic kids. Somebody had to know about it. They didn't. So, the first time the city's getting involved is now. We did have that informational meeting Saturday, and I thought it was very productive. We learned a lot, a lot about what's going on there. Just a, just a few comments, we learned who the clients are going to be. One of the, I lost my term. But one of the problems that came up was clients were coming from criminal justice or juvenile justice system. That was a red flag for some of us. We learned a little bit about, more about what that really means. We learned about what the clients are going to be doing during the day. They're not going to be just warehouse. They're going to be active. They're going to go to school. They're going to go to counseling. They're going to receive the services they need. We also learned about staffing requirements. Who's going to be there taking care of these kids? We learned about contingency plans for these staff, which seemed pretty complete. Client transportation was another issue and training and qualification of those staff. We learned about visitation policies. And we also learned that there is now oversight from Health and Human Services along with the city. And this is something that's been really lacking with this property. And I'm still going to say that the best thing for this neighborhood would be for this to remain family housing. But unfortunately, there seems to be a real need for what justice is trying to do here to take care of these kids. There's a couple of outstanding concerns, and I think they're going to be addressed, was that the permit would go with Nebraska Neurobehavioral Services rather than the property. That offers us a little bit of protection. The general condition of the property, talking at that meeting, talking to justice a couple of times, I think that's going to improve a great deal. He seems to really care about what the neighborhood's going to do. The only other thing I'm going to say is problem resolution, issue resolution. During the process of redeveloping this property, they're talking about putting a fence in. That's going to impact other neighbors. It seems like they're talking about it and they're going to reach a amicable decision and satisfy both parties. But I want that to continue after this facility is occupied. We need somebody to talk to, a direct phone number when we can address issues and hopefully get a good response. If those conditions are met, I'm going to withdraw my opposition to it. I really think it's a needed process, unfortunately, and I think it's going to be good for the community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other opponents today?
All right. Public hearing's closed. I'm going to walk through a proposed amendment that I think can address some of the concerns we just heard from Mr. O'Brien. And I want to thank Dr. Bremma for hosting the neighborhood meeting on Saturday and for the neighbors that attended, all of whom are, several of whom are here. It was a productive conversation, I thought, and a reasonable conversation about what are needed services in the community, but also reasonable concerns by a neighborhood who wants to have some assurances about how such a facility might operate and some site-specific things I want to walk through here. So I want to start by saying I have a floor amendment prepared that all council members have and the applicant also has and the neighbors have seen. I want to talk a minute just about what that does. It does a few things. First, it adopts a updated statement of operations from the applicant dated September 6, 2022. It gets into a little more detail than I think was initially expressed during the planning board stages as this was approved about the population being served ages 13 to 18, some of whom have experienced homelessness or housing instability, some family conflict potentially, and are waiting foster care or group home placement or ideally returning back to their families. It also talks about these services being available 24 hours per day, seven days a week, and that the facility will be staffed for 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'll come back to that point here in a minute. There are many details in here about the training of staff and the requirements of staff, most of which is regulated by the state, the Department of Health and Human Services in such an instance. And I did, for those purposes, attach what is item C on the City Council agenda today, which is just meant to be an overview about what the Department of Health and Human Services does require should this property go to be certified by them and permitted by them to serve this clientele, which is pretty extensive. But the city's review is really more about the special use permit that we have before us today and some slight specific implications. We talked a lot that day about the operating statements and also the operating hours. I think that's really important. That is included in this updated operation statement that indicates visiting hours would only be between 3:30 and 7:00 on weekdays and from noon to 5:00 on weekends. I think that's important. And then exhibit B are some of the things that we also clarified that day and that if adopted would be in effect with this amendment. So I want to walk through those things real quickly. Some givens, but are, but that are spelled out in this exhibit are things like compliance with the updated site plan that is included on this amendment. Compliance with the updated operations plan, which I mentioned is included and dated September 6. Certainly compliance with any signage regulations and all other city regulations and ordinances. But then, as Mr. O'Brien noted, the special use permit would only be allowed to the applicant, not to the property itself. And the reason why I think that's important is because we're having this conversation with the applicants. We're building trust, I think, between the applicant and the neighborhood about how this may operate. But should that applicant change or should the property owner change, the special use permit would no longer be in effect. And so any new ownership would have to come back to the city if they desire to continue such an operation. So I think that that's an important aspect of what this amendment does. A concern was also capacity. And so this amendment also limits capacity down to 10. Dr. Bremma, if you might come up for a minute. It was initially 12, and we talked about eight, which would be my preference. But I know there are also business realities you have when we talk about occupancy and you felt that eight was not possible, right?
Correct. I'm not a nonprofit organization. I'm for profit. Nonprofit, you can apply for grants, maybe come back to the council. They give you some money, you do that. That's not my line of work. That's not my business model. I'm for profit. And for-profit model, if you, that's, I'll just give you a couple of other locations within 600 feet. Actually, one, which is on 9508 Maple. Literally walking distance. It's a four-bedroom, two-bathroom home, which is a substance abuse treatment program. It's eight in that place. If you look right on 30th and Isard, which the Yes House is located, four-bedroom, two-bathroom, serve 12. If you go to 42nd and Ohio, they said it's a three-bedroom, one and a half bath, eight. If you look at this duplex, it's three-bedroom, one and a half bath, three-bedroom, one and a half bath. So technically a total of six bedrooms. And we limit it to eight. That would not work for me as for business-wise. It wouldn't.
That was our, that was my understanding too from our conversation, and I know you've agreed to the 10.
Yes.
Which would be no more than five per side.
Correct.
Of the duplex. It also reiterates there's no personal vehicles allowed for residents, so there wouldn't be any parking problems. That's your business model anyway, right? The rest of you don't have, don't have cars.
They're 13 to 18 in emergency shelter. So if you have a car, you wouldn't be in an emergency shelter at 13 to 18.
Right.
So.
So it spells that out. And then it was a little bit unclear in the operating statement. So there is an item in here that spells this out very clearly that although it would be staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, this says with two staff, two staff, two staff members, so one staff person per side, right?
Correct.
That would be a requirement if this amendment passes. And as I, as I understand it, a requirement from the state anyway, should you get that permit.
Yes.
And then it is a very important point, I think, that Mr. O'Brien made about having a contact person responsible for the property that if there's an issue, a city council member or a neighbor could know who to call and get a direct response right away. And during our meeting, I appreciate that you offered yourself as the property owner and as that contact person, right?
Correct.
So I know I have your information. We'll make sure the neighbors have your information too. And in fact, this says that you would make available contact information for at least two representatives regarding issues or concerns of the property, you know, in case you're out of town or unreachable. There's at least two people we could liaison with, right?
Every one came to my office. Anytime they felt like it, they could stop by there.
Yes, yes. We had the meeting at your office, so everybody knows where you're located too, which we appreciate. And most likely, I imagine your second representative would be Veronica. I know she was at our meeting or?
My second-in-command is Amanda Myers.
Amanda Myers.
Yes.
I'll note that for the record too. And should those change for whatever reason, we'll keep those updated, correct?
Yeah.
And then a couple of site-specific things. There, the site is a bit lacking right now, as neighbors have noted. So I think two improvements that this also spells out, that I believe you've agreed to, is to plant and maintain at least six new trees in the front yard.
Yes.
And then also to build and maintain a code-compliant privacy fence on this, on what would be the side and the rear of the property where other neighbors reside, right?
Correct.
That came up in our meeting too, and I think would be a welcome addition. So all those conditions would be approved if this floor amendment is approved. And I think it's important to have this common understanding and common expectation at this point. I also want to note that should the applicant not follow these provisions of this operating plan, we, I think he will, and we hope it all goes well, but if for some reason in the future that did not happen or there were violations of this operations plan or these conditions, there could be a show cause hearing here at the city council. And a special use permit can be repealed through such a process. So I want neighbors to be aware of that too. I mentioned the heavy regulation that comes with such a property with the state and the Department of Health and Human Services. Should this be approved today? That's your next step, I believe. And that takes time. That's, I think you described it as being at least six months out.
Yes.
Yeah. And that's an application process through the state that's reviewed and they have a pretty extensive review of the property as well, right?
I have to comply with all 25 pages of this. This phase of it is actually a part of the application phase with the state.
So I know there's, you know, still some concerns, but I do think the majority of the neighbors appreciate the approach we've taken and feel some ease with these conditional conditions or some common understanding with these, with these conditions about how this might operate going forward. And if these are approved, I do think it's a better situation than it exists now. I actually share the concern that the city did not know what was currently operating there as a group home disabled operation.
You know, and to kind of address, I think we briefly talked about it, right? And I explained to him, I said, when you look at developmental disability group homes, it doesn't really require city oversight because they are adults. And each individual has a lease agreement with whoever the owner of the property is. So in that scenario, and it's one person to a room, and all those individuals fall under the Department of Health and Human Services and developmental disability. So there aren't any special requirements, you know, for city oversight on that. The only thing you could have done in that scenario would probably have filed a complaint with the state DHTS surveyors. That's probably what they would have done had they known that. They could have called the surveyor. The surveyor would have cited or not cited, they would have reached out to the company. And if the complaint is valid, that company would have been cited for that. So that is usually what you do in that kind of situation.
Which is all soon to be moot, right? Because as I understand it, those residents are moving out, I think by the end of the month, right?
Yes.
So with that background, I do think what we've come up with here as a group and with the neighborhood and with the applicant is an improvement and also has some very specific requirements of the property going forward. So having said that, I can't make motions, but I would support a motion to approve the floor amendment as presented. Mr. Harding, I'll recognize you.
Move the amendment of the hall.
Motion and a second? No further lights? Rowe call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As amended.
As amended? Same second?
Or, that was an amendment of the hall. That was just an amendment. It was just an amendment, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. We're okay with the first motion too?
Yep.
Okay. So now as amended, there's motion and a second, Rowe call.
Got it. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 16 was withdrawn. Item 17, to consider a class C liquor license for Harold's Bar located at 8558 Blondo Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Myron Kaplan, 11404 West Dodge Road, Suite 500, on behalf of the applicant. Newsome's Bar, Inc., DPA Harold's Bar. We're here because of a change of ownership. The sole shareholder of the corporation passed away this summer. The stock is now held in a family trust. With me is Harold Newbanks, who's the manager of the bar. There'll be no change in the operation of the bar, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. This is in my district, and we had a conversation ahead of time. And my condolences to the reason why you had to change the liquor license and the ownership here. But I know that this has been a long-time operation that's never had a complaint, so I'm definitely supportive too. Motion and a second, Rowe call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
17 is approved, six to zero. Item 18, to consider a class C liquor license for La Catrina located at 6500 Railroad Avenue. Is communication in opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Daniela Salcedo. En mi dirección es 6500 Railroad. Omaha, Nebraska, 68107.
Thank you. I know Mr. Espinoza's going to interpret first too.
So hello, my name is Daniela Salcedo. My address is 6500 Railroad, 68107.
Thank you. Just here to answer questions, right? Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Mr. President, Mr. Espinoza. English or Spanish? Spanish is going to take a little longer.
Up to you.
Okay. Italian may be a little quicker. Okay. I do have some questions. So I want to be clear. We received some opposition. This facility, is it the old, like Frank's Treehouse? It was something after that. El Catrina, maybe?
Antes era, ah, no. Antes era un restaurant que se llamaba El Catrina.
Before this, it was a restaurant named El Catrina. But they sold the building.
Okay. Because 6500 has a few different buildings along that property. I wanted to make sure it was the former bar, so that makes sense.
She said that she's the new owner of the building.
Okay. So on the, so on the application, it's a bar or a rental hall?
It's an event rental hall.
Event rental hall. So some of the concerns I have, living in the neighborhood myself, is the parking, if this were a rental hall.
They already rented the part on the back of the building for parking.
How many vehicles could fit back there?
60 cars.
What's the occupancy of this building for events normally?
Max capacity is 100 people.
100 people? Gosh, I thought it was bigger than that. Okay. So 60 spots in the back.
There are two ways going on the back of the building. There are two ways, one on the back of the building, one in front of the building, and then one on the side of the building for the sixty spots.
Does that include on-street parking?
Yes. It goes around the building.
Okay. And so I'm clear, the occupancy is only a hundred for that building?
Yeah, it's only for the small gatherings.
There was a part on the license. Let me get to it. I believe it was for, you're applying for a C for on-sale and off-sale, correct?
Yes, to sell alcohol during events.
So if it's a hall for rental for events, tell me why you would need to sell alcohol to go? Because wouldn't that be an I just for onsite? iPad, there it is. And actually, hold on a second, maybe that would be a question for the clerk. Would the I be for on-sale only for halls and events? Or, okay, for on-sale only. So please explain to me why you would need to, for a rental hall, need to be able to sell off-sale or alcohol?
She said that she's requesting the C because in many of the events, people who rent the places want to bring the alcohol into the facility. What she's trying to do is to avoid that, so minors cannot get access to alcohol, so she can sell it inside during the event.
So the C is for on and off sale?
She says only, she said that only inside.
Only on the inside. And that was my concern, looking through the application, where I believe, unless I'm wrong, wouldn't you just apply for the I for the on-sale only?
She doesn't know. She believes that is correct. It's okay. She can do whatever they need to be done to have a license.
Okay, because there's also an X checked for, it says, do you intend to sell cocktails to go as allowed under the state statute, and it's checked yes.
No, she doesn't intend to do that.
Okay. Would she be okay agreeing on the record to amend that to an I?
Yes.
Appreciate that. So I know you're not the previous owner, but the previous bar owner had some issues. And this is why I have the questions, because my constituents have reached out to me, not knowing who intends to open this business, because it appears that you're new, well, at least to this facility, and they want to be cautious. Yeah, sorry. Tell me about your security that you will have at events.
Sí, voy a tener seguridad en cada evento.
She just want to provide security for each event.
Okay, T-shirt security or off-duty law enforcement?
Whatever he needs to. Everything that she wants to do, she wants to do in the right way. That's the reason she's here.
And being on the committee where we see issues arise, I'm trying to take care of them ahead of time with some of these requests. So I'm not gonna have her say it on the record, but I would highly encourage her to, right out of the gate, hire more qualified security, meaning somebody who is off-duty law enforcement, which would really help with this venue in this area. Okay. If there's any issues, call Mr. Espinoza. I'm just kidding. I'm gonna, I'm gonna motion to approve this, and I wish you luck. It's a facility that has a lot of potential. It just needs to be operated properly.
She hopes that everything's gonna be well. Thanks, everybody.
There was a motion to approve the C.
Yeah. I'll take that motion back. I'll make a motion to amend based on taking away the C and checking the I box for the license.
Okay, there's a motion to approve a Class I, and there's a second to amend it to a Class I. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Now, as amended? As amended. Motion in a second, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda items 19 through 25 were held on November 8th. I'll second. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 26 through 36 are today. If you wish to address the council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Second, roll call. Uh, Mr. Rowe, are you, is your light on? Go ahead.
I wanted to speak to the 32, 33, 34, and 36. Those are the library resolutions. And I just thought I'd take the opportunity to say how happy I am to report on the progress that the library is making on their facilities. I've been a member with Mr. Bagley and Mr. Harding on the library committee, and they've been working very hard under a pretty quick timeframe. The administration building is pretty much 100% complete. White's has pretty well finished that. We moved into that facility, and patrons are using that facility now. There's a few punch-out things that are being done, but for the most part, it's been well-received. And that project went really well. The downtown branch, the exterior work by the owner. It was about 75% complete on the core and the shell. So the windows are in, and they're working on ADA parking, they're working on docks. You know, they're working fast and furious to have that thing ready as well. They're actually about 40% complete on the tenant finish on the inside of that building. And so things are going really well. It was, if you remember, we approved a construction manager at risk type of a program on this. And in talking to our managers there and the library people there, they think that that has been successful. It's worked well. And I just wanted to just kind of go on record and say, hey, things are going well with the libraries, and appreciate the opportunity to vote on these today.
Thank you. Thanks for that summary and that report. I should also recognize Ms. Marley, and she's on Zoom, if she has anything she'd like to add.
I just want to thank the councilman for his comments. We are working through the remaining building issues, and things are going well. And the money for books will be for an opening day collection for the downtown branch. We want to get started ordering that soon, so we have everything ready when we're ready to open.
And those particular items on our agenda today are all within budget and were budgeted, correct?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Now for the lights, there was a motion in a second. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 37, ordinance to accept an authorized disbursement of fiscal year 2021 Choice Implementation Grant Award in the amount of $50 million.
The vote on number 37 is today. I don't see any lights. Is there, Mr. Harding, you're recognized. I'll second. No further lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 37 is approved, six to zero. Item 38, a resolution to approve Lorenzia Billwood Street as a commemorative street name on 42nd Street from Hamilton Street to Lafayette Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number 38 is today. Proponents, please. Do we have anyone here on behalf of Lorenzia? All right, seeing none. Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Palermo. Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 38 is approved, six to zero. Item 39, a resolution to approve Frank E. Daley Street as a commemorative street name on Spencer Street from 30th Street to 28th Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number 39 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Sharita Daley, 6912 North 65th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68152. This is my father, Chad Daley, 6912 North 65th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68152. He is Frank Daley's second son of three. I'm Frank Daley's youngest grandchild, and we are here just on behalf of the street rename. I'm the applicant who submitted the application, and yeah, we're here for any questions anyone may have.
So tell us a little bit about your grandpa.
Yeah, so my grandfather, he owned Stage Two Lounge, which is opened in 1977. Seventy.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, and then Daley's Package Liquor
Seventy-one.
Opened in 1971. I wrote this all up, so it gets jumbled in my head. But yeah, he was a longtime business owner. He passed in 2020 at the age of 83. And we thought that having Spencer Street renamed right at 30th, where you can see both Stage Two Lounge and Daley's Package Liquor would be a great way to remember him. So, yeah.
Thanks for that. Definitely an institution in the community there.
He was an icon to North Omaha. You know, he's a great businessman. He talked from President Bush to P. Diddy, to you named him B.B. King, he met them all. He was out there, he did his thing, so, you know, I think he deserved this.
Yeah, great, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo in of the sentiments that have already been stated about your grandfather, I would assume, your father. Mr. Daley was very iconic in the North Omaha area. Stage Two had been there for a very long time. It did provide economic value for North Omaha. And I'm sure that there are a number of people as a whole that will always remember that area in which he did business for a very long time and in the future. So yes, it would be very, very important to highlight, showcase for generations to come, that naming of Daley there at that location at 30th and Bedford.
Appreciate.
I move that we approve that.
I'll second. No further lights. It's a nice tribute to your grandpa. We appreciate you coming down and telling his story. Roll call.
Palermo. Oh.
Oh, I do have a light on.
Sorry.
I just wanted to say also, you never know who you're gonna run into in life. And me, myself, a long, long time ago, I worked for the gas company, and so I read the meters in that area, and that was one of my stops. And so obviously, your dad, your grandpa, but there was always a lady there a lot, and it was always a safe haven for me when I was getting chased by dogs or whatever else, that I could always duck in there. And I remember exactly where the meters were and some of the nicest people in the neighborhood. So here I am today, approving this with my colleagues, so, yeah, small world, right?
Thank you.
We appreciate you giving that haven to Councilmember Palermo. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 39 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 40, a resolution to deny the claim of David Klein for back wages in the amount of $62,661.72, as documentation submitted by the client's attorney.
Public hearing and vote on number 40 is today. Proponents, please.
Bernard Inambush, deputy city attorney. And I did talk to Tim Buckley, who was here. He had to leave. But I, but he did submit, for your consideration, some additional information. So what you have before you is a recommendation by the administration to deny a claim under the Wage Payment and Collection Act. In order to bring a claim in the district court, or in order to recover pay that you think you're entitled to that you haven't received, you have to make a claim to the city comptroller within 18 months of when that claim accrues. The requirement, then, before the matter can go to the district court for consideration is that the city council has to consider that claim. And that's the expectation here. Frankly, the resolution obviously is written to deny the claim, but even if you were to support the claim, you'd end up having a lawsuit probably in district court. I'll give a little bit of detail. I'm not gonna go into, I'm not gonna reiterate everything that was in the memo or the information that was provided. But the claim in this particular instance was bought by David Klein, who's a retired firefighter. The claim was filed on October 2nd of 2020 and claimed, requested $62,661.72, which comes from two categories. Claims that he was required to use annual and sick leave, that he shouldn't have been. And secondly, the tax withholdings from those annual and sick leave payments that were made, if he would have been received injured-on-duty pay or workers' compensation pay, you would not have had taxes withheld. That's kind of the basis of that particular thing. I provided you a memo that Mr. Bloom and our office and me prepared that analyzes the issues and kind of describes it. I provided a copy of the wage claim with that as well. And then I included some other evidence for your consideration. Mr. Buckley submitted additional information to the city clerk, which is all part of the record, and will be all part of the record that will eventually go to the district court after whatever decision is made here. Just by way of, there's really two defenses that the city believes justify denying this particular claim. The first one is that the claim is untimely. As I indicated on my initial remarks, the law requires that you file a claim within 18 months of when that claim accrued. In this particular case, the claim was filed on October 2nd of 2020, meaning the claim accrued on April 2nd of 2019. So to the extent he was owed anything, that had to So to the extent, um, he was owed anything, that had to, he had, it had to have been something that accrued from April second, twenty nineteen through October second of twenty twenty, and in this particular instance, we believe, since he can, he completed his employment in, in twenty eighteen, uh, that that was untimely. Uh, the second part of it is, just by way of background, Mr. Klein submitted a number of workers, had a number of workers' compensation entries, I think sixteen in total between twenty eighteen, twenty-ten and twenty-eighteen. Under the collective bargaining agreement that's in place between the city and Omaha and local professional firefighters, local three-eight-five, when an individual believes they're injured, they're immediately placed on injured on duty pay, sub, subject to the city determining whether that claim is compensable, if the city determines that it's ultimately not compensable, then they're obligated to reimburse the system. And in some of the, some of the money here are those types of claims. The great majority of the annual sick leave that Mr. Klein used, that he's claiming reimbursement for, were times when he was cleared by his doctor to be allowed to work limited duty, and he was offered the opportunity to work limited duty, but chose not to. And in those instances, um, firefighters are given the opportunity to use their own sick leave, uh, but if, if, under the law, if you're, uh, provided an opportunity to work limited duty pay, we don't have workers' compensation obligations, nor do we have an obligation under the collective bargaining agreement for IOD. So in this particular case, Mr. Klein, several years a, after that occurred, has now made claims that it was inappropriate to use, be required to use his annual and sick leave. We believe it was perfectly within, not only our, uh, rights under the collective bargaining agreement, but under the law. So even if you get to the substance of the complaint, of the claim here, uh, we believe it should be denied. So we respectfully ask that the city council deny the claim. Uh, Mr. Klein will have the opportunity, uh, and in my conversations with Mr. Buckley, uh, who indicated that he had, had to, had to leave, the meeting went a little longer than he expected, uh, that may very well be the anticipated, uh, result, so I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Plermo. Roe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item forty-one, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Energy Center Omaha LLC for supplying steamed and chilled water to the Omaha Park Eight Garage and pedestrian tunnel for a period of ten years.
Public hearing on number forty-one is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item forty-two, an ordinance to amend the title and section two of ordinance number four-three-one-three-one to change the property address to six-three-zero-three Q Street, Planning Department recommends approval.
Public hearing on number forty-two is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item forty-three, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the Falcon Ridge Mixed Use District Development Agreement, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number forty-three is today, proponents please.
Hi, Rob Woodling, Foundations Development, one eight-eight-six, South One Hundred and Twenty-Sixth Street, um, Omaha. Um, this will be part of, this amendment would be to, uh, help facilitate an affordable housing complex for seniors. Um, eighty, uh, eighty percent of the units would be affordable, and twenty percent of tho, those units would be, uh, market rate. Um, one of our, uh, we've had meetings with Miller Public Schools and, uh, have come to some agreement with them on what we need to do for Drexel about possibly having no, uh, parking on either side of Drexel, so during drop-off and, uh, pickup, there's no traffic backup in those areas, and we're supportive of that, and, and we've already kind of begun that process and talking to the city about that. Um, the other issue we talked about with the neighbors was, um, the parking situation with the lowered parking, uh, requirements that we're requesting here. Our part, our portfolio of three hundred senior affordable housing, uh, units here in Omaha shows that thirty percent of our people don't even drive. Um, and then we also have a significant number of, uh, single people, so even though our financing kind of requires and pushes two bedrooms, which requires, uh, extra parking stalls, in reality, our average demographic is a seventy-seven-year-old female that, uh, and thirty percent of those don't drive in, in our project. So, um, that's why the, the reasoning behind asking for the reduced parking. So, answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed, Mr. Roe, you're recognized.
Great, thank you, Mr. President, uh, thank you, uh, Rob, for coming down, spending the day with us, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Um, I just wanted to let people know that it, that we did meet with the neighborhood association, uh, for the neighborhood and of the, uh, townhome association that, that is adjacent to, uh, the property, and had a great conversation, I think we, we came to terms on, on the issues. I did, uh, receive a request from the Falcon Ridge Homeowners Association to read into the record just a couple of paragraphs, if that, if that's okay.
Sure.
It's from, uh, Mr. Ken Stevens, he lives at sixty-two oh-three, South One Hundred and Eighty-fourth. It was actually his house where we met, uh, Sunday afternoon. "The Falcon Ridge Homeowners Association has concerns about the lack of adequate off-street parking for tenants of the proposed development. If there is not adequate off-street parking, the only place for tenants to park is the south side of Drexel Street. This would cause traffic congestion for the residents of Falcon Ridge, who have children attending Beetle Middle School. The school is directly across Drexel Street from the proposed development. Traffic congestion would be a danger to our children getting in and out of their parents' cars when they are dropped off and picked up for school. We support the installation of no parking signs on the south side of Drexel Street to prevent tenants from parking there. Presently, there is no parking on the north side of Drexel. The developer has also offered to limit the total number of cars all tenants could have to forty-seven. He has fifty-seven in the proposal, that leaves ten for, um, off, um, off-site people to come visit their grandmother or whatever. The Falcon Ridge Homeowners Association would support this development if no parking signs are installed on the south side of Drexel Street, and if the developers pledge to limit the number of cars can be made legally enforceable by a covenant attached to the property deed." Uh, since then, I have talked to the, um, homeowners association and kind of spelled out how that process works to petition for no parking. They're agreeable to that, and I don't think there'll be any problem, uh, securing enough signatures to make that happen, so, appreciate that, thanks for your work again.
Thank you for setting up that meeting, appreciate it.
Thanks for that. Now for the lights, next item.
Item forty-four, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the Huntington Park Mixed Use District Development Agreement, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number forty-four is today, proponents please.
Blake Weatherly with Olson, twenty-one eleven, South Sixty-seventh Street, on behalf of IV, the owner and applicant, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item forty-five, an ordinance to authorize the City of Omaha Law Department to negotiate and the mayor to execute settlement agreements with the Douglas County School Districts.
Public hearing on number forty-five is today, proponents please, Mr. Koozie.
Matt Koozie, City of Omaha Law Department. Here to answer any questions. From some of, some, from some of you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Uh, Mr. Plermo, is your, is your light on? He's, he's reaching, I couldn't tell, okay, you're recognized.
It's still not on.
That was a good one. Mr. Koozie, I just wanted to thank you for hanging with us during this meeting and being here to answer any questions, appreciate it.
It's almost as if I have to be.
Yes.
All right. No further lights, that public hearings closed.
Non-action items, items forty-six through seventy-nine do not require public hearing or city council in consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
I'll, there's a motion and a second to adjourn, and I'll wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, before we do? Roll call.
Plermo. Roe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero, meeting is adjourned at four-thirty-eight.